Good evening. We'd like to call the meeting to order and stand for the Fudge Allegiance. Roll call is complete. I'd like to take a motion to resolve that the agenda for the July 11 reorganizational and regular meeting of the Board of Education be approved. Motion?
Motion.
Matt and Jen, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll move on to the administration of oath of offices. The oath of office will be completed by the following individuals who will serve as Board of Education members of the Balden'sville Central School District for the term of office from July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2025. I will list them all and then we will go through and have each person read their oath. Wayne Davis Jr., Sam Sherry Shraven, Tanya Rosado Behringer. The oath will be administered also to the Baker High School student Azan Ashkran, who will serve as the ex-officio student member of the Board of Education for the term of the office from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. If we can begin with Wayne, we're going to have people remain at their seats so we can hear them on the live stream when they read their oaths. Please raise your right hand.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Sam Sherry Shraven.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I faithfully, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member of the Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Tanya Rosado Behringer.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Azan Ashkran.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Student Board Member according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. And that will move us on to the administrative of oath of the Superintendent.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of New York State, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. We'll now move on. Be it resolved that the nominations will be in order for the Office of President of the Board of Education of the Balden'sville School District. At this time, I will take nominations.
I'd like to nominate Jen Patrino for position of President.
My second.
Are there any other nominations? If not, then we'll move forward with the motion. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jane Carries. Jen, can you please head to the front with your... And we'll need to administer the oath for President.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Okay, next up will be nomination for the position of Vice President.
I'd like to nominate Shelley Gackel as Vice President.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Good? No? Yes, I'd like to nominate Jeff Mayer.
I guess I should first ask Shelley, do you accept the nomination?
Yes.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Jeff, third second. Okay, so we have Shelley, Jeff. Any others?
Okay, I just have a comment to the position of Vice President. First, I want to thank everyone for the nomination and voting for me to be President. I really appreciate the support and look forward to moving forward with the entire team, a new team. The position of Vice President, I really need a lot of help this year. It's been a huge lift the last two years, and the position definitely needs some time. I don't know whether I will be running. This is my third year, and if I do run, I don't know if I'll be elected, so I need someone who's going to be ready to fill in the position and have a smooth transition so we can keep moving forward. And that's really important to me because there's a lot of systems that we've put in place since Superintendent Thompson has been here and some changes behind the scenes, and I need someone who's going to be able to have the time to learn super evil from the President's side so when I'm not sitting in this chair next year, someone can smoothly move the team forward. I don't know if anyone else has anything that they want to say.
So we'll go with the first nomination first. Those who'd like to see Shelley Gackel to Vice Presidency? All in favor? Aye. That's four. And those who'd like to see Jeff in the Vice Presidency, all in favor? Now we find, so Jeff is our next Vice President.
Okay. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
So moving on to the rest of the reorg meeting. Appointment of officers. Resolved that the Board of Education approve appointment of officers, section six, items B through F. That'll be for clerk in district and clerk pro temp of the district and receiver of legal documents, claims auditor, internal auditor, external auditor, and school district treasurer and deputy treasurer. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first, Matt second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero. Section seven, other appointments. Resolved that the Board of Education approve other appointments, section seven, items B through Z, double B. And that will include school attorneys, school physician, nurse practitioner, central treasurer, deputy central treasurer, professor class, attendance officer, records access officer for foil and records management officer, records access appeals officer, which is foil, and records management appeals officer, asbestos hazard emergency response, local education agency designee, chemical hygiene officer, school pesticide representative, review official, verification official for federal child nutrition program, hearing official for federal child nutrition program, school district purchasing agent, deputy purchasing agent, section 504 chairpersons, committee on special education, subcommittee on special education, committee on preschool, special education, audit committee, liaison for homeless children and youth, Title IX officers, dignity for all students act, UDAS coordinators, certification of Basel Central School District principal evaluators, certification of Basel Central School District lead evaluators, designation of cooperative health insurance fund of Central New York consortium director representatives, district designation of OCM workers, compensation consortium representatives, designation of civil rights compliance officers, designation of external civil rights compliance officers. Can I have a motion, please? Move. Shelley first. Second, Jeff. Any questions or discussion on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Section eight, designations. Resolved that the Board of Education approve designation, section eight, items B through F. That includes official depositories, Board of Education regular meeting date for 2022, 2023, official newspapers, impartial hearing officers, and data privacy officer. Can I have a motion, please? Move. Shelley first. Sam second. Any questions or discussion on any of those items? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Section nine, authorizations. Resolved that the Board of Education approve authorization, section nine, items B through H. That includes petty cash funds, authorization of credit cards, official bank signatories, official representative of the lead educational agency, certification of payrolls, authorization of intervention of real property tax assessment review proceedings for 2022, 2023, and signature authorization for state education department step one and step five. Any questions or discussion? Or, I'm sorry, may I have a motion, please? Shelley first.
Second.
Second, Tony. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Section 10, official undertakings. Resolved that the Balden'sville Central School District utilized a faithful performance blanket bond in lieu of specific performance bonds for 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Tony first, Jeff second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Other items. Section 11. Resolved that the Board of Education approve other items, section 11, items B through E. That includes policies, mileage reimbursements, building use fee, and rates of non-contractual extra duty assignments for 2022, 2023 school year. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Matt first.
Second.
Shelley. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. And that is the conclusion of the annual reorganizational meeting, and we're going to move into our regular meeting. Resolved that the Board of Education enter into the general session of the regular Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Tony. Frank first, Tony second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. We move into the board, the correspondence board activities and committee reports, and since the last Board of Education meeting, we've had no meetings or events. I'm not sure if any one of my board colleagues have attended anything at school related or anything to share, any professional development. So upcoming meetings, we have this Thursday is the NISBA Summer Law Conference in Rochester. We have at least two members attending. On July 26, we have a Board of Education retreat. On July 28, we have our Furor Furenza Law Conference in Skinny Atlas. We have some people attending that. On Thursday and Friday, July 28th and 29th, a half day for both of those to do the summer law conference in a virtual format. And then our next regular Board of Education meeting will be August 22 with Communications Committee meeting preceding that. Next section requests to speak. Do you have anybody tonight? Okay. Moving on to item 16, consent agenda. Resolved that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda pursuant to the items listed. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first.
Second.
Second, Matt. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, I have a question about the treasurer. Are we going to employ two treasurers now?
So we actually have done some restructuring in the business office, and we can definitely catch the new board members up to speed, but no, we'll only have one treasurer appointed, but this person's not starting until August, so we have to have the treasurer that we appointed tonight continue those duties until the new treasurer starts by civil service title. The current treasurer is not a civil service title as a treasurer. They're acting as a treasurer. Any other questions?
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Next section is the leadership report, so I'll hand this over to Superintendent Thompson.
Good evening. My section is very brief. Reports of the board. You'll see in your attachment in board docs, it has all the dates of our reports that will be provided throughout the year.
I just have one question on that. This year, at the end of the year, we combined the Code of Conduct public hearing with the school safety plan. Are we doing that this year as well?
Yes.
Okay. Is it separated on this? But this isn't formal suggest draft?
Right. Yep, we'll finalize that.
And then... And for our new board members, this is just a, these are the reports that we do at each meeting every year that roll over, but if there's any topics or we will get other presentations at some of these board meetings depending upon need, just so you know.
Jay, this is not necessarily about, it is, but, so the special education frontline report, are we still, you know, we had discussed, and I think we've been using the term unique learners throughout, and I'm wondering if we're still going to use that term as opposed to special education. I just think it...
Good catch, sir.
Certainly much better what we're looking to do and how we're helping educate and for all of our students.
Thank you, Tony. And I'll ask Danielle Horni to please come up. And Joe, did you want, you haven't wanted to piggyback something to that as well?
Yeah, I'm going to start.
Thank you.
For the end of year academic report, I will be real brief. Just wanted to provide you with the graduation data that has been generated for this year's graduates. So we had 418 completers, and consistent to other years, what we focus on, the advanced Regents' diploma rate is at about 66%. I believe the goal established was like around 65% in the board goals, but we've hovered anywhere between the low 60s to the 70s. Last year it was in the 70s due to the pandemic with the no Regents exams and all of the exemptions that were established for students, but we are certainly consistent to pre-pandemic with the advanced diploma designations. But New York State continues to add more options and pathways for students, and so this list continues to grow with the various designations that you see listed there. Are there questions before?
Just a point that I know that Joe and Danielle, the three of us have discussed, that we didn't really have students fall behind is really what we, that's the, that's the analysis that we're looking at. So that's good news, and that's kudos to our teachers and our staff, and of course, our students working hard.
I just had a quick question. Is this 418 students of 418 students, or are there some that aren't listed?
There was five students.
There's 423.
Right. Five students that did not complete for June of 30th, 2022. So whether they're going back to summer school, there could be some additions to this, and they would become a part of our five-year graduation rate for state accountability. So five non-completers out of the core.
Can I just have a, I guess, comment question? For example, the Regents' diploma with advanced designation, it's 125. That, then underneath that you have like math, math and science and all the different ones, so...
You got to add those together because that's just the students who received the advanced designation only, and then...
The...
Right. So if you take 141 from 418, that's going to give you the total number of advanced designation diplomas. That's just by subtracting out the skills, the Regents' diploma, the Regents' diploma with CDOs and the CTE. I can't do that math that quickly in my head.
No, it's okay. Shelley, know your math, Chris, but it's okay. I just want to make sure.
I do know it's about 66%, though. So the next part of the report, Danielle's going to go quickly through the end of year academic goals, and she's going to highlight also before some of the work that we've been doing here, hopefully to get you some information that you'll appreciate in an upcoming Friday letter. So she'll start with a dashboard preview.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our new members. Like Joe mentioned, I wanted to share this similar view, but it is not a report card, district report card view, but it is our Regents' exam scores preview for you. So what I've been working on putting together is very similar to our district's report card in its functionality. You may remember a similar report from our Regents' scores last year, though last year we only gave four exams. So it's a slightly different report to last year because it has more information. It's a bit more comprehensive, but we wanted to just show this preview because it will be coming to you in an upcoming Friday letter. This is just a detailed report. The dashboard that you'll be receiving has not only the Regents' exam scores, but also the course scores in comparison to the Regents' exam scores for every exam that was administered. So the only exception to that would be the US History and Government exam that was not administered. So what you'll be able to see on that detailed report as the board has received in the past in a different, non-interactive format, broken into five percentage point increments, how many students scored within each of those score ranges, but then also what is the percent of the total number of students that were tested. So just on this exam in particular for the English exam, I chose to highlight as an example, but again, similar to the district report card, using the filters, you'll be able to filter down for the different exams that were administered on the different pages in the report. If you wanted to drill down into specific grade levels where there's multiple grade levels administering the same exam, you can certainly do that as well through this dashboard. The other components of the dashboard that you'll receive describes in detail and provides resources for the New York State exemptions, as well as the New York State Special Appeals. So exemptions started during COVID when exams were not administered. Students received exemptions this year in US History and Government. However, we now have another new change in the mix for Regents' scores when it comes to what are being considered Special Appeals. So in the past, some students scoring within a certain score range who passed the course could appeal and still meet the requirements for graduation if that appeal were granted. That has been extended this, this year for any students who score between a 50 and a 64 on the Regents' exam who also pass the course. So there's a lot of data work currently happening at DIRKI, Baker, and certainly in our office to ensure that those Special Appeals are accurate as well as the exemptions. So just a couple of new ever-changing vocabulary terms for you that I didn't want you to be surprised by when you see that report. Are there any questions when it comes to this upcoming Regents' dashboard?
So we're going to get this for each of the courses in the Friday letter?
Core.
And for things besides the Regents which you're going to go over now?
Yeah, so in the Friday letter, it'll be the full dashboard report. I want to say it's like six different pages, but it has the course scores as well as the Regents' exam scores for those Regents' courses. In the quarter four report that's available to anyone online, it really just focuses on what the course scores are, and in this case, it's for quarter four, but in the new report that you'll receive, it's those final course scores, which are again used for the exemptions or for the Special Appeals.
Quick question and quick comment. Question, is this real data?
Real data.
Or is this just like, like real numbers or just examples?
Real numbers.
Okay.
Real numbers.
I was just confused with the word preview. I didn't know if that meant it was just format.
No, it's really just the preview of what you'll see format-wise, but the exam that I chose for this was the English exam.
And I think, just one comment at the top there, just an overall passing percentage could be useful without doing, I think it's, it looks like it's low 90s, but without doing the math, it would be a helpful number just to see at the top.
I'd be happy to throw that in there. Thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other suggestions so we can get that finalized?
No, that's a good, I guess I just add, I'm curious, like, once this is in the Friday letter, like, what's the plan for the board to review, and if they have any questions, you know, that should probably be public. So we just put that as another presentation at a future board meeting afterwards, and a chance to review, because this is new. We're just trying to figure out the process and how we're going to do this moving forward.
Excellent question, and Danielle and Joe and I have discussed, maybe even doing a tutorial with the board to navigate through the data if you would find that helpful or useful. So...
That's great. I would agree. I certainly appreciate that.
But yes, we'll definitely be having a presentation in the future too. So, thank you. So the next, thank you, Danielle.
Were there any questions as far as the quarter four report goes? I think Joe's pulling up the district report card now. There weren't any major noticings when we were putting the data together for the quarter four report, but it is currently loaded. So for our new board members, every quarter you'll receive a report where we'll go over what some of the updated data is for the interactive report card. Some of the trends that we do notice is that we don't see a ton of movement on the different pages that are within this report, but this page that you see currently is just a brief summary when it comes quarter to quarter of what that data snapshot looks like for that. when it comes quarter to quarter of what that data snapshot looks like for that marking period. So I'm happy to answer any questions again when it comes to that. Happy to report our COVID average case number was only six cases a day for the quarter four report, which was a huge shift from previously in the school year. Happy news there.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. And just as a footnote, the physical education, health, and athletics update has been moved to August, to the August meeting. So that will take us right into Mr. Barber, textbook adoption. Thank you.
So this is a first reading for the text, Grade ten through twelve Performing Arts and Technical Theater. It's a new course that we are offering at Baker High School. So the text, again, we have had it, or we will have it, or had had it available. If you'd like to see a copy of that, you can request that from Jason. But this will appear for final reading and approval at the August twenty-second meeting. Other questions?
No questions. I just think it's really cool.
I would agree.
Just for processing, for our newest board members, when these books, they put in the Friday letter when they're gonna be coming up for first reading, and any books that you would like to just preview prior to the first reading, you would just send an email to Jason, and he'll have them copies in his office to pick up at any time. Okay, moving on to new business. Item A, resolved that the Board of Education approved the textbook adoption of Namona by Noel Stevenson to be used in Grade nine ELA classes at Dirkie Junior High School pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first. Second, Jeff, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item B, resolved that the Board of Education approved the Board of Education's Standing Committee Assignments for two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Shelley first. Second, Frank, any questions or discussion? Before we vote on this, I just wanna bring up an idea I'm talking with Jason, something that they did for us to consider. We can approve this tonight. We had a lot of interest in three different committees this year, the Policy Committee, the Capitol, the Facilities Committee, and the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And some people who really wanted to be on it weren't able to get on, because we can only have four to make sure we don't have a quorum to take action. So one of the ideas that he proposed is to have an alternate for each of those. So if someone can't attend, and I know we have a lot of busy board members that can't make committee meetings all the time, if you were to call the alternate that's listed there to fill in for you, then we'll have more people be exposed to different committees and more aware of what's going on. So like I said, we can, we'll approve this, but that's something that we want to consider doing, maybe in roundtable, we can discuss that and bring up another document at a future meeting to take action on.
Yeah, that's a good idea. As I recall, also, they're open meetings, so any board member who wants to attend, who isn't officially on the committee, can also attend.
Right, that they can attend always to learn, but to actually be part of the conversation, maybe in a different committee. And so we have four people present from the board to have a voice there. It would be a good idea to do, move to an alternate situation if you choose to do that. Make a note to make some decisions in roundtable, but for this part, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item C, resolved that the Board of Education approved the fund balance management plan pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first, Shelley second, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item D, resolved that the Board of Education will approve the bonds of Central School District's school lunch prices for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three attached. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first. Second, Matt? I was looking that way, sorry, Frank. Any questions or discussion?
I know that it's been no cost for the last couple of years. It's still, that ends in, does that end in now or is that in August?
When we return to the fall, that is correct, the free programs related to COVID at this point in time are not gonna exist anymore. However, the guidance is coming out very, very late. It came out very, very late in regards to summer. So we can keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best. But at this point, we have to plan for the program that we'd be back into, which is the regular free and reduced program, unfortunately.
And I guess, just how do we get that message out to the community so that they know, you know, that the COVID program ended, so that we make sure any student, may have been relying, our families relying on that, understand and know that we have to make sure that they can...
Yep, we're gonna put that out in a parent letter as well as shooting it out on our social media as well.
And it should be in the...
Go ahead, Joe.
That I've, that it's gonna be released this month in a week.
Is there a protocol for students that forget their lunch or can't afford lunch? Can they get something to eat?
That's been, go ahead, Kim. But I do know that that has been in place. If a student needs food, we don't, not feed them.
And just to go back to, we did start talking to our leadership team back in June, and some of the schools and the principals were trying to start working on getting that information out as much as possible before the students left in June. So we were, we've been talking about this for a while now. I mean, we can, we have to keep talking about it. I don't discount that at all. But we did try to make some efforts on the front end near the end of the school year as well, and we'll continue that PR campaign. I think one of the things Brian was saying and Donna, our new food service director, was that really they're kind of hoping for some of those big social media campaigns that we've heard about that actually come from the state level, some of those buzz phrase things that are out there that we experienced when we went to some of the free food for COVID. They're hoping that they will pick up some of this, too, because we know it's gonna be a huge, huge transition for families, for all families, whether you're busy at night or in a hurry in the morning, and, you know, you're used to being able to do that. So I know there's still a lot of political action and a lot of messages around that, you know, people don't really agree with the fact that this is what we're faced with at this point.
Is there, and I know that, oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, and I know we've talked about it previously as well. We've talked about it. I just, you know, make sure that we can keep, continue to get that message out so nobody just gets caught, you know. You know, as a student, there could be a stigma, you know, geez, I don't know what to do, so I'm just not gonna eat. Just don't want anybody to get caught up in that, so.
Is there a deadline for applying for the free lunch program? Or can they do that anytime during?
They can do that anytime. One of the biggest concerns and why we started talking about it early is typically there's a rollover period from the previous year, and we weren't sure how that was gonna work, so we were, we were trying to strategize about that. And then we learned that we could go back to pre-COVID, which doesn't help our youngest children. But we could go back to pre-COVID, and anybody that qualified at that point, they will qualify during that grace period that has always occurred during the school year. So that kind of put Brian in gear to really push for the kindergarten and first graders to make sure we have all that information. And so we're collecting all of those applications that we have, because there would be no grace period for those students at this point.
Any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item E, resolved that the Board of Education approved the emergency application of herbicide vegetation control treatments specified below. Can I have a motion, please? Matt first. Second, Tony, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item F, resolved that the Board of Education approved the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three initial AS-seven contract with unaduct of Cortland Madison, both seized pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please? Jeff first, Tony second, any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item G, resolved that the Board of Education approved the disposal of surplus equipment instructional material pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please? Shelley first. Second, Jeff, any questions or discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine zero. Item H, resolved that the Board of Education approved the refunding bond resolution pursuant to its attach. Can I have a motion, please? Yeah, there is. Jeff first. Second, Tony, and this will be a roll call. There's no questions or discussion. Any questions or discussion? Okay, Kim?
Wayne Davis, engineer?
Yes.
Thank you. Anthony Germano?
Yes.
Michelle Decker?
Yes.
Jeff Marier?
Yes.
Frank Mattis?
Yes.
Jeff, Jennifer Patrino?
Yes.
Tanya Rosetta-Barringer?
Yes.
Sherry Schraven?
Yes.
Matt Jaeger?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. Item I, resolution that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to implement separation agreement and general release with an employee of the bonds of Central School District. Can I have a motion, please? Tony first. Second, Frank, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Passes nine zero. We now move to board roundtable portion of the meeting, and does anyone have anything?
Welcome to the members. Look forward to working with y'all.
And we look forward to the school year starting. I don't wish your summer away, but we look forward to as on student reports that will be coming forward this school year. So welcome to everyone. Just a couple cleanup things. Let's go back to the committees first. Is anyone interested? I know that there was, everyone got their second choice except for me and Sam. Would you be interested in being an alternate on the Policy Committee? Okay. Is there anyone else who wanted to, wanted, you don't have to have an alternate for anything, but if there's anyone who would like to actually jump into the conversations if there's an absence?
Are you speaking specifically about the Policy Committee or?
No, any of the committees, yep.
I would like to, the DEI and the facility?
Which one?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which one would you like to be an alternate on first?
Oh, I'm sorry, DEI.
DEI.
Is the intent that there's one alternate per, or unlimited alternate?
We can do unlimited if we want. I don't know the chances of two, but it has happened, because I showed up at a committee meeting last year where I wasn't on, and there was no one there, so, I mean, it definitely happens with work commitments. If no one minds or wants facilities, that was my second choice, and I didn't get it because I gave it to Frank. We are tied, Frank, they handed over to you. Anyone else? Any other committees? I know some people are on four already, and I know some people who, you know, added more on than last year, and I know they're pretty stretched with their commitments already.
We require an alternate for communications.
Okay, you did say that to me when we were talking. Thanks, Tanya.
I would just suggest to the full board, if that does occur, that you send an email to the entire board, so everybody has a heads up, which is courtesy. Thank you.
That way, we don't have to memorize the alternate list either.
I have a question. What is the expectation for board members on committee, meeting, on committees? What's the expectation in terms of, A, attendance, B, reporting? Could you provide some clarity?
If you signed up for committees, especially this year, because there were, like I said, three committees where other members wanted to be part of, we didn't have no spots, obviously, to attend the meetings, take notes. Everyone who's on the committee would report out during the committee's reports portion of the meeting. For some of the committees, there's a lot of prep work, like Policy is probably the one with the most amount of prep work. Some of my other committees didn't have that type of prep work, but more, you know, reporting out and, you know, just little reminders to make sure we revisit things if we need to. I don't know if anyone else wants to share their experiences on different committees? Those are just the ones that I've been on.
John, I think Tanya also enquired about the attendance at meetings. Did you ask that? I don't think you touched or answered that.
If you signed up for a committee, then hopefully you're committing to being at all of those committee meetings. But if you can't, it's nice to give other people an opportunity, especially this year. And I'm really impressed because this is the first time since I've been on the board, every single committee has all four slots filled, which I have not seen since two thousand and seventeen. So it definitely speaks to the commitment level of this board in moving forward this year, getting some things done, and the communications of having enough people to report back to each other.
I think the biggest thing I think I learned this year is making sure we give good reports back to the board and make sure everybody's on board as we go, not to wait till we get too close to resolution. So I think it's just attend the meetings and provide input, and then make sure the board's aware of what's going on at those meetings. But as was stated earlier, I mean, any board member can go to any committee meeting anytime. We just, we can only have four. Because of quorum rules, we can only have four participate at any given times.
And also, if you can't get to a committee meeting that you're not assigned to, but you really wanna find out what's going on, we have them recorded this year, and they're up, and we can view after the fact as well. So along those same lines, just for agenda planning, one of the things that started, I think it was my first year on the board, we have an alternate agenda planning as president, vice president, attendants, and then we rotate everyone through one board member for agenda planning. And that's really good for a couple reasons, just to make sure that the president, vice president aren't too powerful, and everyone's getting things on the agenda that they like. But also, it's really for training purposes, also so you kind of know what goes into the prep and those conversations prior to a board meeting. So there's sometimes that people can't attend agenda planning. So I just recommend, so we always have another voice there besides president and vice president for those reasons I stated, that if you can't attend, if you just kind of send an email to Jason and the entire board, so, and see if there's anyone who can fill that spot for you. Would that be okay? I'm not saying, I'm just asking. It's just a recommendation.
I think it's a great suggestion.
We plan to keep them at the same time and date this year.
Good question. So this year, what time were they? They were seven, because they've been seven, seven-thirty, all different times since I've been on the board. I don't know what your work schedule is like this year, seven or?
It's really wide open as to the, what the board would like to see. So we're really open at any time as far as the cabinet is concerned.
And they have, they're virtual this year. We did start when Jason first started, we did meet the first couple, but then we switched over to virtual once we were used to our system. So we can remain virtual for agenda planning. I think that's been convenient for everyone. I've seen a lot of nods. I'm sure it is with work schedules. So I guess for you, Jeff, you know, is there, is that a good time? Is that too early? Is it too late? I'm not sure when you have to be at work. Yeah, it's AM. So I guess it's seven AM agenda planning this year. Virtual.
And that's always the, for the new board members, that's always the Wednesday or Thursday prior to the board meeting?
We changed them to Thursday this year, so it's closer to the board meeting, so there's less changes and adjustments being made to the agenda after it's been posted. So we'll keep it at Thursdays?
I was just gonna ask, generally, how long are most? Forty-five minutes? But we could make it quicker.
Next thing we have, quickly, just as a reminder, we have our board retreat on July twenty-sixth, and I started laying down the agenda with Derek Dorsey, who will be doing that with us. And just if there's any other topics or areas of governance that anyone'd like him to weave into the agenda that evening, just send me an email. I think he said next, he's setting up a meeting with you next, and then all the ideas will come together. So the next time, and actually, Jeff, when I have that, he would like to have vice president there, too, so we'll coordinate with your schedule, and we can share any other ideas that come our way. So send myself, Jason, and Jeff an email if there's anything that you want added. Tanya?
My apologies. My apologies, Jen. So, a wondering, I understand, and I don't think it's a motion or anything like that, but just a concern. And I know we've discussed the importance of the entire board being present for capacity building. And I wonder, in the absence of a couple of board members, and I understand we all have commitments and things like that, is it in the best interest to move forward with this type of professional learning and capacity building, especially if we're trying to build a team cohesion and one voice? Just wondering if the absence of a couple members is, is the right thing to do. I know it was discussed in email communication, I agree with some of your comments, I just put that on the table, because I am concerned.
The goal is to always have everyone there, and what we find, we do much better during the school year, getting everyone there when there's a retreat planned during the summer, and also, you know, any summer I've been here, it's always been a challenge. We're limited with Derek, he's only available on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so that, you know, we need to do it ideally in July, so we can do the next phase of super eval with our board specific goals, not the district goals. So yes, people have an occasion planned, but I was thinking going forward, if it'd be worthwhile, our team having a discussion as we put those dates out for next year's sample on our website, for people who want to, you know, run for seat, especially, they know what the time commitment is and what the obligation is during the summertime, because a lot of people think school's out, there's nothing to do, and actually, when school's out, there's tons to do, preparing for the next year. And then the board team, you know, maybe getting a date set much earlier. This is about the timeframe that we try and meet for our professional development, so people are aware there's an extra session in there to plan for. But we can discuss it as a team going forward, because, yeah. And to that point, actually, Tanya, Jason and I have talked about revamping the Board of Ed page off the website, which Barry Ives, who was here at our last board meeting from the New York State School Boards Association, actually said that he looked at our website as well prior to me meeting with him virtually, which I shared out to you guys in email. Jason and I talked about working with Sarah Buxat to kind of get more information out there, so these types of things, you know, people are more aware of what the commitment is and the rules and responsibilities Barry had mentioned, things like that.
I know that, excuse me, I know that Sarah is working on it, we're trying to get through graduation, so, and now we're getting the hive out, so that's on the radar for the summer to be completed.
And another item, we talked about a proposed committee, Future Opportunities Committee. Frank and I have done some back and forths and some research, and we're not sure exactly if it should be a board committee yet, there's some other things out there that we could do to kind of move in the direction and fill in some of the gaps that may or may, may even not, we may learn that we don't have them, but we're going to bring that up at the August board meeting, once we do some more research on our own. And then the last two items are kind of together. They are, for our new board members and our current board members, the Convention, the School Board Association Convention is in Syracuse this year, October 27th through 29th. Registration opens on August 1st. After September 11th, there's an actual increase in the fee to attend. It's not as vital this year that we get registered on the first day, because we're not going to have to worry about housing like we do in previous years, but we're going to want to coordinate, we can maybe talk about that the next time we're together, so Christie would be the one who would register all of us. But this year's going to be pretty exciting. Superintendent Thompson and Danielle Nohorni are going to be presenting the dashboard in one of the sessions, so it'll be great if anyone who's in attendance could be there to support them, and we also have some musical groups who will be performing throughout the convention as well. And one of them, I think before, it's in the main lobby in front of, before the main session or something, that our students will be performing, so just put that on your radar, and we'll talk about that next time. And the last thing is the new, the National School Board Association, that we've never gone since I've been on the board. I think you, some, Jones, that you attended the year it was in Boston, I'm not sure if maybe you can speak to some of the differences, but Jason and I talked about maybe some board members going to that, that's April 1st through 3rd, and that's in Orlando. And that one, after talking to people from other districts who've attended, it's very important that if we decide to go and you can go, that we do find out when that registration opens, because to get the good housing and not have to deal with transportation in Orlando would be good that we do that right away. They say it's a larger scope, it's very, very competitive to present at that one. I think that the closing for submissions is in the next week or so, and then they anticipate the next portion opening as to registration starting. But this is a great opportunity to discuss some of those higher level, get other ideas, remember some other states. Jeff, I don't know if you can share some stuff from your experience in Boston?
It's been a few years, but my biggest memory of going to the National School Board Convention was the variety of, you know, we hear a lot about New York State topics, and then you go to the convention, and New York State Convention, and you hear, we kind of all talk about all our challenges within New York State, but then when you go to the national, it's a completely different world, almost in every state of the things, you know, their regulations, the things they deal with. There's still common themes, but just the amount of, I mean, school boards don't even work the same ways in many states, so it's just, it was quite an eye opener, and, you know, great ideas to bring back the, the range of the, you know, what do you call them, the sessions are, you know, hugely diverse compared to what we get at the New York State, because those are mostly focused on New York State topics, so it's quite an eye opener, and there's definitely some stuff you can bring back, but there's also some stuff, you know, just understanding of what they do in other states, but they, some of it just won't apply here. But I still think it's a great way to network with people and expand our horizon, so if you're interested in going, it's definitely worth the time, and I guess April and Orlando isn't such a bad time to go down there either. Yeah, I'd highly recommend it if people can, it sounds like right around spring break time too, right? So it's probably, if you had kids and stuff in school, you may not have to wear that much. Anyway, I'd recommend it if anybody's interested. It's expensive, so I don't know if the whole board can go, but we might have to bump our budget up.
And one good thing is we're not traveling to New York City for New York State School Boards this year, that was pretty expensive, because I think a lot of people attended, right? If it's down in New York, I think this is something that we could actually attend most likely without it being a budget buster, but since State School Boards is here, we're saving on that expense, it'd be a great opportunity for us to see what else is out there and what we can bring back to the district and just learn ourselves about the functioning of school boards. So just mark the calendar, April 1st through 3rd, keep it on your radar, and we'll just keep watching the NSBA website to see when registration will open. Tony, did you have a question? You were, oh, okay. Oh, okay. All right, that's all I had for roundtable, a lot of cleanup stuff, so I apologize. Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, just one quick question for me. So Friday letter, we had dates posted through the end of August. Is there a calendar that looks out further for the other board member, board meeting dates and committee meetings? I want to get those on my calendars.
That would be in the Friday letter, just a, I know we already approved the meeting dates at a previous meeting, but we'll put everything together with the committee meetings, the regular meetings, the agenda planning, what other things?
I know the draft, the meeting, the six thirty time and all that kind of stuff is in the Friday letter. Five twenty-seven.
It's, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, also, now that we have the dates that they've been presented to the board, Christie is ready to go with the Google Calendar that we had created last year for the Board of Ed calendar, and the nice thing with that is if something changes, it changes for everybody at once. So if anybody needs any help or any training with the Google Calendar, let us know, we can definitely help with that, but she will start entering that stuff in that platform that we began using last year as well, just so that everybody has that change instantly.
And that really helps streamline everything, not only from a board standpoint, but from the district office standpoint as well, so it'll be a nice, really nice thing to have.
And I think also we, in the past, we put in the Friday letter all the contact information for all the new board members as well, a document, if we could have that as well, so we all had, communicate these last minute things, where I say, you know, send you guys an email, check it out, you know.
And ironically enough, Christie sent, developed the four drafts today of all of the things that we're discussing right now, and I'm anticipating she'll finalize that probably this week.
I just need to call Christie.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else for board roundtable? Record time, everybody. All right, meeting adjournment. I know Brian will be proud.
I'll be watching.
Resolved that the July 11th, 2022 regular Board of Education meeting be adjourned. Can I have a motion please?
Move.
Wow, that was a topic. I'll just give first and twenty-second to Frank. Any questions? Anyone want to hang out more? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you, everyone. Bring.